Are we ready? We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic Constitution's hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda?
Yep.
No additions, I'll take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve as is.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Cusine agenda. Is there any questions or concerns?
Yeah, number eight, the special event permit. Is that really necessary for walking the horse through the streets to have an event permit?
I think because we want it cleaned up too.
Okay.
And in case the horse makes a mess.
Okay.
Plus the noise.
Because they can't just walk away and leave it.
All right.
All right.
It was just interesting, I was thinking about that. I was like, hmm, it's interesting that you get a permit for it, so.
And we don't usually allow closed day animals in town.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Visitors to the council, we have the Smith Schaefer audit presentation.
Hi, I'm Kelly Lentz. We perform the audit again this year. We'll start with audit opinion, issuing an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. Means we feel the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with GAAP. We met with Tim and Sarah earlier to go over the financial statements in greater detail. Tonight, I'm going to go through the PowerPoint in a more summarized version, but I did pass out the hard copies of the financial statement if anybody does want to take a look at that information in greater detail. Minnesota Leave Compliance, we test various areas like collateral house bank, bills throughout the year, and the letters that we send all the council members to disclose to us if they have any conflicts of interest. And we have no exceptions with that testing. The management letter, we have two comments that we typically have. A segregation of duty due to the limited personnel at the city, as well as preparation of the financial statement, which just means that you rely on Smith Schaefer to help prepare those financial statements. Starting with the taxable tax capacity. It's at $7.3 million, so as the value of the homes are increasing. When we see the taxable tax capacity continuing to increase, we've been able to see on the next slide that we've been able to bring up our property tax levy. So our levy is about 51% of our total governmental revenues. Tax collection this year at $4.2 million. We did increase our levy about $228,000. You can see in the bullet points there where we did increase. Most of our increases there in our debt service funds. But then you see that we did bring down the general fund levy by $157,000 this year. Tax increment revenue is at $158,000. We have some increment coming in from the assisted living in the Appin. And then our local government aid, LGA, was flat for several years there. 2021 through 2023, we did see an increase of about $117,000 in 2024. So at $1.3 million, LGA is 17% of our total governmental revenues compared to 51% we saw coming in from our property tax levy. So with that increase this year, next year, it's looking like we're getting about $1,500 increase. So we're not going to see as nice of an increase in 2025 from LGA.
There's not a cut. As we discussed, the legislature's pending a cut, so.
3%?
Mm-hmm.
Governmental fund revenues, then, if the, all combined, you see the, strictly the revenue, so the bright blue there are tax increments, small amount there. Our most significant revenue is coming in from the property tax levy in the dark blue. You can see that's continuing to increase as our LGA is remaining relatively flat. Charges for services in the yellow there, that's our pool revenue, ice arena revenue, fire calls and contracts and planning and zoning. And then we get some assessments there in the green. Moving to expenditures, our general government. This includes our mayor and council, elections, signing and zoning, accounting and legal. Total of $544,000, up about $39,000 from the prior year. Our increases this year was due to it being an election year. And then we had donations of $10,000 to the festival in the park and $15,000 to SNCAC this year. Public safety expenditures is our police and fire departments building inspection totaled $1.6 million. We had a decrease of about $60,000 from the prior year. Our salaries were down as we had a retirement and we replaced it with, employed with a lower wage rate. We spent about 35% of our general fund expenditures on public safety if we're not including our capital outlay costs. Public works, our streets and alleys, snow and ice removal totaled $486,000. This was down about $47,000. We had a decrease with less snow removal and our repairs and maintenance on our streets this year. Culture and recreation, our parks, swimming pool, playgrounds, our ice arena library also is under this category, totaled about $1.5 million. Increase of about $61,000. Most of this is our park salary. Due to an allocation, we had more salary allocated to parks this year with less on streets, which we saw the decrease in the public works on the previous slide. Our next slide there with the library, expenditures of $446,000. Not including any of our capital outlay in this slide, so maintained a little bit, just down about $4,000 from the previous year. The next slide with all those governmental expenditures we just kind of looked at, as the categories across the bottom, year to year, the 2024 is in that yellow there. So general fund has been staying around that $500,000 range with the increase this year, as I mentioned, the election year as well as those two donations we did. Public safety is down with the police salary. Public works down with the snow removal and repairs. Not much spent there in health and welfare that one year that we see outstanding there. We had the restoration of a flooded property. Culture and recreation is up some with increased mowing costs as well as salary in the parks. The cemetery fund came under the general fund in 2022. So we just have three years of data there, but most of that's mowing costs. Unallocated expenditures, that's our MMU safety and insurance allocations there. And then TIP and economic development can fluctuate. We had assisted living TIP, we had to pay back to the county for $99,000 this year as well as up from the prior, previous year. Moving into our reserves then, looking at the general fund. Unassigned fund balance at $3.4 million there in the green. And then our subsequent year's budgeted expenditures in the silver there are $5.1 million. So if we're looking at that, unassigned as a percentage of that next year's budgeted expenditures, we're at 68%. The last five years in the column there, we can see we're staying between that 65%, 68% range pretty steadily. Note in the last bullet, we're saying the city is striving to maintain between 50% to 75%, so you're right within that range. Library fund balance at $351,000. You can see in 2022, we spent down some of those reserves for our building project. We've been able to increase in 2023 with a large donation of $198,000. And then we built the reserves up some again this year in 2024. EDA fund balance, our EDA funds supported through our property tax levy dollars that are coming in. In 2022, this fund transferred out $75,000 to the EDA revolving loan fund, built it back up. And then in 2024, we have a balance of $163,000 after we had a grant come in from about $22,000 from the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. EDA Financial Assistance Fund, this fund is administered by an outside entity, not the city. And the fund balance is $234,000 in this fund. Next fund, our EDA revolving loan fund. This is the fund that EDA fund transferred that $75,000 to in 2022. As you can see that increase there. And then this year, ended with a balance of about $99,000 after we wrote off some uncollectible loans. So there's one loan outstanding in this fund for millwork. And then that balance, the $99,000, that's available for future loans to loan out. Our debt service then. This shows all of the bonds across the bottom there. If we look, three in, the 2014 A bond, that was paid off in 2024. And three from the right, 2020 B bond, that's the next one that's going to come off, but not until 2028. And we had no new bonds issued this year. So total bonds outstanding at $20.8 million. Our net pension liability, so this represents the city's portion of tariffs under funding. This is actually the only determined number. They give us an amount and it shows your total amount and your percentage of the plans under funding. So at $1.6 million of your portions and something that the city owes, it's just more for informational purposes that we're required to disclose. You see how it fluctuates year to year, you know, the big spike in 2022. The biggest factors are how the market's performing and if those actuaries change their assumptions when they're doing their studies year to year. But that last bullet point there, it does show the two plans you're in, the general and the PEPs, the police and fire. That it's, the plan's actually 89.10% funded and the PEP is 90.2% funded. So it's actually a pretty, pretty well-funded plan. The next slide for our net pension assets. This is our fire relief. So they actually don't have a liability because they're overfunded. So they're showing a net pension asset of $156,000 in their plan. Our capital projects, our stabilization fund at almost $2.1 million. Fund increased about $352,000 from the prior year after transferring from the general fund of $300,000 this year. So you can see that fund balance continuing to build those reserves. Our utility funds, our water fund. Operating revenues there in the purple, about $1.1 million. We had a rate increase as well as our usage was up. Those rates are sufficient to cover our operating expenses there in the darker blue as well as our depreciation in the lighter blue. So we're building those reserves for our future maintenance and improvements. Our expenses were down some in all of our, most of our utility funds related to payroll decrease with the supervisor retiring, coming back at a lower rate. So in the silver there, that's our income of about $315,000. The difference between our operating revenues and then those expenses and depreciation. The water fund's cash and investments at $1.6 million did increase about $110,000 from the prior year. So we have our bonds in the light blue there, we're paying down those debts. So our outstanding obligations of the water fund is at $3.6 million. And those bonds are there when we issued them for the 2017 street assessment project as well as Highway 57 and the water tower project. Our wastewater fund, operating revenues there in the purple, about $2.5 million. With our rate increase, that increased from the prior year. And our expenses were up with repairs for the infiltration improvements. Operating revenues are still covering both our expenditures and our depreciation, which resulted in about $603,000 income this year versus last year. About the same, a little, down a little bit, but our revenues were up. Wastewater fund, our cash in the bright blue there, almost $5 million. We're continuing to build our cash reserves in this fund and then pay down our debt there in the green. So $3.6 million bonds outstanding for our Highway 57 project, the wastewater's portion of it. Our electric fund, operating revenues in the purple there, $5.5 million. Our rate and usage was up. And expenses were down mostly related to our power purchase contract decreasing about $225,000 from last year. The difference between their operating revenues covering both the expenses and depreciation resulted in $1.6 million of income there in the silver. Electric fund's cash balance, continuing to build those reserves at $7.4 million. We increased about $1.3 million of our cash balance this year. We didn't have any capital expenditures in the electric fund this year. Our stormwater fund, operating revenues there in the purple, $557,000 with our rate increase. We saw an increase from the prior year. And depreciation, our most significant expense in the stormwater fund totaled $148,000. So the difference between our operating revenues and our operating expenses and depreciation is in the silver there, about $321,000. The stormwater fund's cash in the green, $1.2 million, continuing to build those reserves. We increased cash about $295,000. And then our bonds there in the yellow, paying those down at $1.1 million. Their portion of Highway 57 and then the street assessment project. Our liquor fund, operating revenues after our cost of goods sold netted out, a total of $387,000. We had an increase from the prior year. Covering both operating expenses and depreciation, difference there in the silver of $106,000. Liquor fund does pay out annually $16,000 to the general fund since 2019. And the liquor fund's cash balance there, we used some of those reserves in 2023. As you see the decrease there to fund the building project. So our cash balance ended in 2024 at $527,000. So in summary, our general fund reserves increased about $300,000 to end in at $3.9 million. Our unassigned balance, about 68% of our next year's budgeted expenditures in the general fund. Our payments on our debt are being made timely. We have ongoing capital projects, Vale Property, 2025 Street Project, our Southwest Reconstruction Project, the Water Tower Well Health Project, and our Flood Control Project. Our stabilization fund, almost at $2.1 million. It's available for our future capital projects we have. And our current water and wastewater rate, both appear to be covering our costs and increasing our cash reserves to fund future capital projects as well. Electric cash reserve is $7.4 million, increased about $1.2 million from the prior year. Does anybody have any questions on any of those?
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
She surmised it in 15 minutes. That was a, Sarah, how many hours did you put into helping? No, we really appreciate the auditors. They, they've helped us a lot over the last couple of years. The accountants on the other side of the Smith Schaefer there. Sarah, I know you've learned a lot and Kelly and your team, Riley, they've done a great job. We appreciate that. If you do have other questions, including your package, you do have the full financial statement as well as a hard copy. And then we will be looking for a motion to accept the audit for 2024. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you very much.
Tim, are we going to be expecting this data entered into our ClearGov thing then? Now that it's approved?
Yeah, actually Sarah's been, we were both working on that today. We have the previous year's data entered and we expect to have that before it goes live, probably at the end of July, so.
Fantastic.
I only had one question. Where did that, we took out, we saved up, what, $45,000 we put away for the ambulance fund?
That's actually in this year's budget.
That's in this year's budget.
So not in last year's budget.
You won't see it until now. Which one would it come out of? Is that public safety?
It would come out of the general fund.
Oh, general fund.
So yeah, with the general fund allocation, so.
Okay. This one sure is allocated to, okay.
And there's a couple of things to think about. We did have those increases in fund balance. And one of those is related to, we know we have a pumper truck that we'd like to pay cash for. If we don't have to bond for that, it's a smaller amount. So that'll probably come out of stabilization. And I know the fire department said it would be in the range of around $400,000 if we buy a new one. So that's something that'll kind of, it came in, but it's going to go out again. And on the general fund side, I know that staff is looking at doing some building improvements. City Hall's in need of some significant, you know, repairs too. We haven't really done a lot to the building since the city bought it. And that was before Linda started here, which as we know, was a very short time ago, Linda. But.
Six months before I started.
Six months before you started. So we're looking at a good project next year, probably some energy efficiency windows, things like that, facade improvements, trying to maintain the building. We're maintaining, planning on staying in this building right now unless the city council decides to build a new one. But I'd like to try and keep it a good asset for us. I think it's a, it's a good building, it serves our needs for the time being. We want to maintain it. So we know that there's going to be some costs there as well as the public works, Taj Mahal, they have some roofing issues as well. So there'll be some costs on that coming out of general fund next year. But I think we're in good position to not have to worry about borrowing for those projects, which is great.
There's a little roofing issue here too, isn't there? I mean, I've seen a couple of shingles on the ground.
The shingles blow off and we put them back on. It isn't leaking as far as I can tell. So that's the trick. I mean, we have talked about doing that. I think the estimate on that is more than I'd like to pay. So if we enter a steel roof or something like that, I think for the time being, we'll just continue to maintain it, so.
Looking for a motion to approve the audit?
Yes, please. Motion to accept the audit.
Motion to accept the audit, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have a motion? Do we have?
A second.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor's report. Just a reminder that next month, there's only going to be one meeting. It's for June 18th. And then in July, there's one meeting and August is one meeting. And also just a reminder to start thinking about getting all your extra meetings ready and sent over to Linda by the end of June, roughly?
First half.
First half of June?
Oh, by the end of June, give me your first half meetings.
Okay. So just a reminder, so. That's all I got there. Public forum, I've got no cards. Public hearing, there's none. Committee report, nothing. Old business, Parkland dedication.
So this is a topic we've talked about a little bit. I know that you saw some preliminary information earlier this year. Been working with Brad and the folks up at Housington Kegler to provide really good data for us and a good presentation. So I figured, you know, no one can explain it better than Brad himself. So he's graced us with his presence tonight in person, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Brad, for coming down.
Yes.
And make sure if you have questions, you know, this is a great opportunity to ask, you know, because he's going to be able to explain it better than I could, for sure.
All right. Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Tim kind of overviewed, we've been looking at park dedication for a couple of months now, just exploring how we might look at casings, park dedication and structure maybe a little bit differently, going from the per acre price valuation method to more of a per unit valuation method. Just a little qualification background on our firm. We do a lot of park system planning, park master planning, and then actual park development, doing the construction documents leading to the actual development of parks. And so part of that work helps us really understand the costing of parks. And so a big chunk of what I'm going to talk about today is based on a very complex spreadsheet we have that goes into, you know, what does it cost to build a park, varying different parks? And that's an important part of this. The other side of our work, we do a lot of comprehensive planning and zoning ordinance work. And so we understand subdivision ordinances, we understand statutes, state statutes, and are able to help bridge the legal side with the practical side of the developer having to absorb a park dedication cost or a landowner selling land and losing some of their value because it goes into park dedication. So what I'm going to talk through today is the basis that you need to have as part of your defending, why do we have a park dedication policy? So first, just talking about statute. Minnesota statutes basically give you the right or the ability to secure a park dedication. That may be land for a physical park where development might need it. Or it may be cash and move land if we have a park here that's not too far away. We really don't need land for another park, therefore they would give cash and move that land. So there's a dedication part of it. Of more importance really is the nexus subdivision clause. And that's essentially saying you've got to have a reason, justifiable and a proportionate calculation that says, here's what we're going to collect, why we're going to collect it. In other words, what is the need for it? And here's our basis for it. So that is really important because you need to have a defendable policy in the event that anyone wants to challenge that. And that does happen from time to time. So how do we start establishing the basis for the need for it? So we start with the land use plan and the comprehensive plan. The city did your comprehensive plan back in 2017. We had the luxury of working with you in doing that. In doing that, we look at how are we going to grow with the next 20 or 30 year lifespan? And so the bright colors you see on there are kind of that long-term projection for growth. The famine colors beyond that is looking at all of the areas we have within some kind of orderly annexation agreement or some kind of logical growth pattern that says, here's our future long-term growth. And when I'm looking at saying long-term, we've tried to estimate, well, how much growth really is that? We're talking about 200 years to fill up all of that growth. At the rate casings growing now, it may be a little bit inflated from that. So we're really looking pretty long-term. But the land use plan starts to establish the basis for the need. Growth creates the need for parks and recreation systems. So part of that, understanding the need, is looking at our population. On the left side, you see an estimate of a current population of about 7,000 people, 2,600 some households. And if you think about the distribution of those households, it's about 85% the traditional single-family detached homes, 15% attached product, whether it's apartment, townhomes, duplexes, et cetera. That percentage mix right now is starting to evolve and change a little bit. And so the next set of numbers you see that fold out are completely assumptions and projections. And they're not just pulled out of the air, they're based on a lot of logic that we put into growth patterns, development patterns, need, and what we envision household characteristics might demand in terms of housing. And so if we look at that full build-out picture and we think of that famine area, which we really don't have a land use pattern to it, our assumption is that's going to continue to grow predominantly at a single-family, two and a half to three unit per acre pattern, with a few clusters obviously of some mixed housing thrown in there. And so if we start to put numbers to that, we end up with a full build-out population of almost 22,000 people, a household count of 8,140 roughly households. That's an additional 5,583 new households. So when we talk about park dedication fee, we're talking about feeling land that's going to meet the need for those new households, not the existing. So park dedication is collected when subdivisions happen, land is subdivided, you're creating new lots, you're creating that new demand. The existing system cannot be funded in terms of maintenance and improvement by park dedication. That's really meant to be for future parks.
Brad, how long is that projection going out, just so everyone knows?
So that's that 200 year.
200 years.
200 years of growth we're talking.
I won't worry too much about.
It's a long, long range. Now, you need to look at park dedication every few years. We did, we do surveys in our office. We haven't done one in a while, but we like to reach out and really take the pulse. Excuse me. We like to take the pulse of parks, dedication across the state of Minnesota. And we also do a little bit in Iowa. And so they'll send out surveys. And those surveys are basically asked communities, you know, what do you do for your park dedication policy? In 2019, some of the park costs, I want to say were about $100,000 an acre in capital costs going into parks. Fast forward today, that number is probably at least two times that. Thank you, Tim. At least two times that, if not more. And that's just based on park costs. And, you know, I'm sure you guys have experienced that inflation and costs of materials and products and developing parks has gone up. So every few years, you should be looking at this, understanding, okay, what's our park demand? What trends have changed? Everybody loves pickleball now. Do we need to add pickleball courts to those costs differently? You know, what are the needs that we have to accommodate? And you should adjust those every so often. So while we're looking at 200 years out, you know, things can change. Growth can slow down. And in two or three years, that 200 years may become 220 years, 210 years. Growth may pick up and all of a sudden, well, maybe it's more like 180 years, 175 years. So planning changes, you need to be dynamic with it, not static. So when we, the other thing that we did is said, we're not going to stay 85, 15% traditionally single-family. As we continue to grow, we're going to continue to see a little bit more diversity of housing. And I think you're starting to see some of that now with some of the demand. So our assumption is going 70, 30. But it's important because those assumptions are going to lead into the numbers that we talked about as we move through this analysis. Next slide. So it's also important to think about commercial growth. Today, we don't collect park dedication for commercial properties. And I would say 50, 50, when you go look at other communities, do you collect park dedication for commercial? If you're in metro areas, you're more likely going to because you're not, you're not as competing as hard for trying to get economic development, commercial growth. Some of the smaller communities might say, you know, we're not going to do that because we see that as a barrier. However, you ask a lot of employees and you ask a lot of business development, having a robust park system in your community is an asset. And that's an important value added to people that have a business there, whether it's residents who don't live in casings that come and work there and play leagues or go rock at the park over their lunch hour or whatnot. So we want to look at commercial growth too. We're about 110 acres of commercial exclusive of downtown, not including downtown. Downtown's kind of a unique beast there. It's about 6% of land. If we take that same assumption forward and we assume 226 acres of commercial development, our analysis has not included that when we get into the numbers, but we did play with it. And we had the ability to plug it back in should we think, you know, let's, let's try to include some commercial development at a little different rate. I would say the need, and this is consistent across all communities, the, the impact or the demand created by commercial development is not the same as a single-family home. So there is some, some reduction or some deduction for that that you would make. So those are the projections that we have included in our analysis. And go to the next slide. And then this is the big slide where, okay, we have this growth, it's going to create some demand. Well, how many parks are we talking about and what are the values of those parks? In the comprehensive plan, and this is pretty traditional park planning standards, we want to try to create a system where every household can walk to a park within 10-minute walk. And so these are half-mile radiuses, circles that say, okay, with this growth, we'll start putting those circles out there to say. we'll start putting those circles out there to say, somewhere within these areas, we need to plan for a park. And what that amounts to is about 11 new parks in the city. And so those 11 parks will then vary based on what might be in those parks. You don't put the same thing in every park. Kids love to go to different parks, and people are going to get in their cars and drive to parks unless you have a really good trail system. But that's a popular thing for people to do is go experience different parks. So each park has a different piece. We have a really complex spreadsheet that takes each of those 11 dots and says, here's some components with each of those parks. Here's the low value, the high value, what's the average? And those begin to make up how much dollars we put into that park system. This does include the Vale Park. And the Vale Park is one park in the system that's probably more than a neighborhood park. It's more of a regional park, it's going to have a regional draw. And so we might look at that park a little bit differently. But for our analysis, we included the cost of that park in here. Next slide. So this is our 11 parks, 3.5 acre rough average, roughly 40 acres of parkland over that 200-year time period. Typical class costs that we include the components of a park, a playground, maybe a small, medium, and large playground. You might have signage, wayfinding, trash receptacles, picnic benches, a court, half-court, full-court for basketball or pickleball, trail loops within the park, not trails beyond the parks, athletic fields, maybe programmed, maybe unprogrammed, multipurpose field, or open play areas, et cetera. Those kinds of things are what we have in those park estimates. So there's 11 parks. We end up with almost 1.2 some million per park with those various components. And again, that averages, you might have some parks that are more like 400,000, 500,000. We have some that are 3 million because you might put bigger things or more substantial things in there. So how do we get to that 14 million? Well, if land dedicated is part of the park, that's not in the capital cost, but we'll get land dedicated, and then we'll collect that cash from park dedication. Will we get to that 14 million? Not unless you jack your prices way up, which is what the next slide I'll talk to, and that is central nexus. And so just jump to the bottom there. If we wanted to use park dedication to make sure we get to that, we need to up our fees to about 2,500 per unit. Comparatively, that would be on the lower end of what you see in metro cities, 2,500 per unit. What you see in metro cities is more like 4,000 to 6,000 bucks per unit for their park system. So the essential nexus is what's required connection between the impact of development and the need and the city's park dedication requirement. That's the story that we just talked through. It needs to be direct and meaningful connection. Again, this plan, the documentation that we have, when you adopt an ordinance, and I would recommend that we, we're just setting the stage for it now and that when you do your fee ordinance at the end of the year, that gives people a little notice. And one of the things we'll do coming out of this meeting is go talk to developers, let everybody know, you know, we might be adjusting the fees in this way because we don't want to create a situation where someone might have a deal in the works right now, and all of a sudden we jack the prices on park dedication, which throws off their performance and can create bad ill for you guys. So we'll do a little bit of engagement over this with the intent of, on your direction, adjusting the fees by the end of the year. Okay, next slide. So I think in your packet, we left these slides out. We're kind of still working on this, and, you know, we're going to continue to do it. But comparative cities, what does it mean, our fees based, and when you look at other cities, why is it important? Well, we know that we want to be competitive in the region, and we don't want to drive local developers out of the market because all of a sudden our park dedication is fee so high, and they're going to run over to a nearby community. But it's challenging to make the comparison because nobody's apples to apples. Everybody does it a little bit differently. Pretty much, there's a lot of similarities to it, but there's always some little unique thing to it. And if you go try to read other cities' park dedication ordinances, you'll see what I mean. It's important to be aligned with state statutes also. And if you ever read some of other cities' ordinances or hear how they do it, it may be likely that some of our peer communities aren't exactly in alignment with state statutes. So for comparisons to be a value, we have to make some assumptions. Next slide. And so we've made some assumptions, and we've actually talked with staff and gone through a little process to try to figure out what are other cities doing? And again, we do the surveys, and so I'll feed into this slide a little bit too, some 2019 numbers from the survey. So Pine Island is 300 per unit. I don't think they distinguish between single-family and multifamily. Plainview, 163 per unit, again, no distinguishing between the two. Stewartville, 500 per unit. St. Charles, 650 per unit. Byron, 950 per unit. And I think Byron does distinguish between multifamily and single-family where the initial 450 is at the lot, so at the time of subdivision. And I think the 500 per unit then is on top of that. So if you subdivide and you create a multifamily lot, a year later or two years later, they come back to build an apartment on it, they're going to pay more at that 500 per unit rate. I think that's how it works in Byron, not 100% sure. One of the things with that, and one of the things we'll talk about when we get to that, is how do you make sure that you're compliant with state statutes, which says you collect park dedication at the time of plot? And so it gets tricky. If someone's plotting a multifamily parcel and you're doing a per-unit cost, you're collecting it at the time of plot, not at the time of building permit. So there is a little direction we'll have about that. Let's go to the next slide. Oh, so the 2018 survey work that we do, we always do metro and then greater Minnesota. And when we did the greater Minnesota, the per-unit fees were about 650 to 800 per unit fees. So that's what we did in 2019. But there were only four or five responses to that survey from greater Minnesota. Okay, so Casson's park dedication fees, well, let me pause there. Any questions? I just threw a whole bunch of stuff at you. Okay. Casson park dedication fees, and staff, correct me if I butcher this, based on a per acre fee structure right now. Residential, same for single-family, we're dealing with multifamily. So we use 12,000 bucks per acre, and we take 10% of that. Not distinguishing between single-family or multifamily. So our first assumption and the first question that we need to explore more is, is land-guided single-family the same price as land-guided multifamily? So when you do the price per acre value, some cities, and not many do this because it's costly, will actually do appraisals to figure out the value of that land. It's tricky, it takes time, and time is money to developers. They don't want to mess with that, so they'll just, let's just agree on a value based on the estimated market values and call it good. But right now, we base it on 12,000 per acre. No park dedication is currently collected for commercial development, right? Or do we?
Correct, it's not collected.
Okay. So how do we then translate that to a per-unit basis? Well, it's difficult because the value changes as density changes. So a three-unit per acre, single-family detached subdivision is going to pay $400 per acre, 10% of 12,000. If it's two-unit, it's going to pay $600 an acre. So if density goes down, they're going to pay more. If density goes up, they pay less. So that's where this percentage, when you do it on a per-unit basis, gets a little trickier, maybe not real equitable. Multifamily development pays the same, thus per-unit fee drops. That's, I guess, that's that paragraph I just talked to. So under current park dedication policy, we cover less than 16% of the projected improvement needs. So if we took that current policy and we said, let's apply that policy and assume that's what we pay as we project things out, we get about 16% of that 14 million that we need to cover our park fees. So that means we don't have enough money to really build the parks. The benefit or the incentive to developers to pay more is that parks in a neighborhood help sell their lots. Often, we run into situations in communities when we do comprehensive plans, and developers will come and say, yeah, I understand the park dedication, great. But when are you going to build that park? I need that park built. Because as soon as you build that park, not only can I sell lots, but also now all of a sudden my premiums are going up because there's a cool park that people can live by. So there's incentive to do that. Today, you may get the land for the park, but you don't have a lot of cash to be able to go build that park. And so the question is, how do we start building that cash so that we are able to build parks when parks are dedicated? So let's see, changes to consider. Okay, so, go to the changes to consider. So that comes to where we're at and how we might rethink doing the park dedication. We started to look at per capita. So a single-family home is going to have 3.4 people per household. Multifamily home is going to have like 2.4, 2.6 people per household. So it's not a, the single-family home's going to have more people, therefore more impact, more demand. Multifamily's going to have less. Single-family development is going to have less density, so fewer units, so fewer park dedications going to be collected. Multifamily's going to have a lot more units, more park dedication collected. So when we look at the per capita information and we plug that into some formulas, we end up with looking at single-family at 460 per unit and multifamily at 343 per unit. Oh, I got 3.2 and 2.4, sorry, 3.2 people and 2.4. So those were the numbers in using that 12,000 per acre estimate when we looked at the split between multifamily and single-family being 70, 30, and carrying out those projections on demand. And when we look at a per-unit collection versus the fee, I think I have this on the last one, don't I? We get up to about 24%. So by, just by switching from a, from a 400 per unit regardless of the use to 460 per single-family unit and 343 per multifamily unit, we jump up about 8% towards that park dedication. So if we were to just go to a single-family and multifamily split and keep it where we're at today, that split, 460 to 343, is about the same as what the 10% of the land value at 12,000 an acre is. So the question to council then is, how far up from that should we go? Are you comfortable going? And like I said, I think this is a gradual introduction. We can have some stakeholder engagement, talk to some developers about it, and kind of test the waters, and come back with the fee ordinance when you do your fee ordinance, which, do you guys do that in December or do you do?
Yeah, November, December.
November, December, we would come back with an actual number that we would plug into there. And I would say you are good going up in that number all the way to 2,500 units per acre, or dollars per unit, if you were to just say all units. Or split between the two, you know, you could go a little bit higher for a single-family and a little bit lower for multifamily. I don't think you want to go there, but there is some upward mobility. And I think that's a policy discussion that you all can talk about. So, questions?
So this only covers new parks. We are putting a modular in to our, by our East Diamond Field. Would that have been considered? If we had, is that considered a new park because we're putting it in? Or do you already have East Diamond Park? And that's an upgrade.
Upgrade.
An upgrade to the current existing park.
Right, I think to his earlier point. He's kind of forecasting out to the new park needs for park dedication. And then after the park dedication, you know, the park dedication should cover the new park. Then the city has that responsibility through the tax levy to levy money for parks to maintain and continue upgrades.
That's what I'm just trying to feel like.
If East Diamond Park has not been improved yet?
Well, it had a baseball field, but it didn't have a park. That's where I'm trying to understand, because I'm on the park board. What constitutes a park? I look at Northwest Casson, it's literally a patch of ground and two soccer fields.
It's got some nice trees now.
It's got some newly planted trees. Is that considered a park? Because if it is, then we can't use this to upgrade that as we add Oscar Meadows. Oscar Meadows is going to have a path to it. Like, is our, what parks would fall, or do any of our current parks that are parks fall under being allowed to have improvements based on this?
So I would say that what you need to do is you need to document, you know, here's a park, it was dedicated at this point in time, here's the improvement that went into it. You can't redo that improvement with park improvement. But if you do new improvements that were not part of that park, that are not taking out and replacing, and it's a little subtly to it, but good planning could document that, and you could use park dedication for some of those things.
So in 10 years, we wanted to put a modular in the Northwest Park. That would be allowed because it's brand-new, never been there?
Yes. I believe so.
Okay, I'm just, I understand.
The park dedication fees, the council can choose to do whatever they want with those. I mean, it's money you receive, so, I mean, the way it works right now is that the amount is so much less than we would spend on park improvements. It's that we absorb that at the general fund, but we spend 10 times that on, like a modular, for example.
Yeah, oh yeah.
You know, I mean, that's by itself is $75,000 or something like that. So, you know, I look at this as more about going forward. And you're not going to make, you're never going to, I don't think you're going to be able to get it 100% covered. It's just not going to happen. And, you know, I mean, if Byron can go, you know, 950 bucks, that's a lot, to me, I feel like, in this area. But, you know, certainly whatever, you know, the data shows.
Are their numbers skewed because of the lots in Summerby, or is that not having any impact?
I don't know. No. I think we see a broad diversity of numbers. I don't think, I think you have to have conversations with builders and help them see the value and understand the value. Most of them will get it, but some of them will push back on it.
We've had some pretty consistent developers in town, Bigelow is an example. Have we had conversations with them in the last couple of years about our park dedication fees and their comfortableness that these would change?
Sure. I mean, I think for most of the regular subdivisions, you know, where the density is a regular subdivision, Oscar Meadows is a good example, where it's a standard subdivision, you know, you know, four houses per acre kind of a thing. You know, we don't see as much feedback. I think, you know, for example, the Common Acres subdivision, there was a little feedback on that. For example, because that is a large lot subdivision, is a large acreage. You know, I think to Councilor Johnson's original point, why we brought this up is, you know, what are we incentivizing in essence? What are we saying is, you know, because if that would have been a denser subdivision, he still would have paid the same parkland. So he chose to only build, I don't know, I think it's 40, 40 houses on 80 acres, in essence, with all the roads and everything else that added in, because that was the product that he wanted to sell. And so, I mean, you know, I think when he came in, he said, well, you know, it's a lot, right? But at the same time, I don't think he pushed back a lot on it because, I mean, you know, like you said, we have some builders in town that are, they understand the cost of doing business, and parks is something they want to build support. I mean, helping build that trail extension out to Common Acres was a, was a big expense. They absorbed that too. You know, whereas, you know, now you're going to have the subdivision, like the Schram subdivision, which is now it's a 30-acre subdivision, so he paid his park dedication fee. Well, and some of it's in lieu of, he's building some trails there too. But, you know, it's going to actually be, the part of it's going to be dense. So I, you know, it's kind of a, it's hit or miss. And we may see all the builders, you know, Lennar's coming into Rochester's market pretty strongly, and I don't know what their outlook on it is going to be. They're probably, I mean, some of the parts of the country, I was just down in Texas over the weekend for a wedding, and Lennar builds a lot of houses down there. And it's a little different perspective they have on density and how they build and amenities and things like that. So I don't know what they're going to bring to the table.
Are we missing the boat on not having this 343 per multifamily unit fee right now? Are we missing a lot of revenue?
Well, I think that, you know, there hasn't been a ton of multifamily up until the last five-year period.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I would say that they probably haven't missed the boat per se. But, you know, obviously, you know, that's why we're looking at it today is to try and fine-tune it so that it works as that pattern may change some. Because absolutely, you know, if you're bringing density, you want to make sure that you're collecting the right amount. I think going to a per-lot fee versus the per-acre fee, in my mind, it makes sense. And it's, you know, it's explainable, it's calculable. I think to Brad's point, it's more of what level is the council going to find acceptable? And are the developers going to find acceptable? Because we know that we're not getting the revenue we need. At the same time, we don't want to make lots unaffordable for construction because you're going to miss out on any new growth then.
You don't want it to be a barrier, but you do want it to be something that results.
In the metro, where, yeah, I mean, I was talking to a colleague at the Minnesota City Managers Conference, and he's in Big Lake, and they charge a lot. Okay, I mean, it's that $4,000, you know, and they just, they figure, hey, the lot's already 100,000. What's in the, you know, four grand? It's not a big deal to them.
Have, do we have input from Charlie and Ben on this?
Well, I mean, the input from Ben is that he'd like more resources. I think you probably know that. I mean, the department's always going to do what they can to try and, you know, boost our park system. And we have a great park system, you know, but we don't want necessarily, as things grow, like the Northwest Park is kind of the next one slated for something. You know, we don't want things to fall behind. I think there was probably a period of time between 2000 and 2015 where it probably wasn't keeping pace with the development. You know, we had a lot of new houses. You know, Lyons was a big switch when they swapped land there, and Lyons is a good park. But we know that that was one of the parks that was master planned, you know, with Hoysington. Those are many that are not cheap. You know, we've got the ball fields in, it's not going to be cheap. We know with the South Side Park that Ian slated for the South Side, I mean, that is... uh, going to require some investment, you know.
And we did work with, with staff, Charlie and others, when we did the Vale Park and we were doing the costing, we have a lot of cost information, it was important for us to talk with them with local cost to make sure we get the costs right.
Good questions though, I mean, that's, that's what we're here to talk about tonight.
Trying to think of what would be asked from park board and, yeah.
I don't think at any point in time we're going to have enough parkland dedication to pay for all the parks. We're always going to have to levy for it and, and to maintain that. Once those, those maintenance dollars are going to have to be there, so.
There has to be a balance between what's fair and what gets us to where we want to go. We don't want to push development away.
I'd really be interested in what are some of the developers are thinking.
Sure.
I know they're going to, they're going to voice their opinion saying they don't want more, but I think they also will realize the benefit too.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be a straight, we don't want more, but certainly there's a, what's the middle ground here?
Yeah, just, yeah. It'd be interesting to hear some feedback from them.
Four hundred and sixty dollars on a forty, fifty thousand dollar lot is, is less than what they're charging for four thousand, a hundred thousand dollar lot in cities, so.
Yeah, I think.
There's no, there's no lot in Casson you're going to get for fifty thousand.
Not anymore, no. Um, I do like the idea of not asking commercial because we do want to keep burning in our commercial, we don't want to hamper that in any way, just personal thought there, but if people have other thoughts on the commercial.
I, I was going to say the same thing, Ryan, is I'm not sold on, on the commercial portion and maybe we could put a little bit more burden on the multifamily to try and make up a little bit of that, but, I mean, as for the single family, I think the way you laid this out is essentially the per unit for the single family is about the same prices they're paying now, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so I don't think any of the single family developments are going to have much feedback at all because it'd be about the same for them. It's really the, the townhomes and the apartment buildings that haven't been started yet that are probably going to be the ones to complain, I would expect.
Would they, would our new developments that are already planned, those wouldn't fall under this because we're doing this after that?
That's right.
Yeah.
I would say anything that's in the pipeline right now that's got an application.
Anything that's been started.
Until you adopt the ordinance, those are good.
That makes sense, that's fair.
Which behooves us to, you know, keep taking a look at this and trying to make a decision, you know, I think trying to have something finalized by the end of summer would be ideal. Um, you know, we know that there, there are going to continue to be projects that are coming forward. There are a lot of units in flux right now, but over the next two hundred years, you know, obviously it'll change, but over the next five years, we're going to see a lot of things coming in.
And from someone that's grown up in town since nineteen eighty-nine, we really had that one central veterans park. You had the park where Shopko was and now other businesses are, but it, you, if you were on the northeast side of town, you didn't want to cross to Northwest because of the road, fifty-seven. It's nice to see, we've added a lot of parks in the last fifteen, twenty years and we've added a lot of space, but adding those modulars, adding more as, as we've grown, it's probably, it's definitely neat.
And one thing I didn't really talk much about, um, none of our numbers in here include trails. And I think the city historically has been very good at and, and the developers have cooperated in dedicating and building trails, right? Is that fair? As part of the, the, the system. And so there is that basis, I think Casson is kind of above, ahead of the rest communities when it comes to those connectivity aspects. So we did not include those costs in the, the numbers.
That'll be some more information for us to look at.
Well, I mean, I think what we need from you is, you know, that last page is some feedback, you know, Ryan said some questions tonight, I mean, if you think about like, what do you, you know, and Paul, thank you for the feedback, if you have any other feedback, you know, please let staff know in the next couple of weeks here before it kind of gets, you know, a little stale, we, we tend to forget about things after a couple of weeks. Get it back to us, we can continue to fine tune things with Brad and try and have a recommendation for, um, an alteration to the policy. I think right now we're looking at changing it to a per lot and what that combination will look like, we'll have to have some, like I said, some discussion as staff along.
I'm very much in favor of it, I mean, if the, if the goal is to get twenty-five hundred and we're not going to get there, obviously, but if we're only paying four, it's a twenty-one hundred dollar difference. So sixteen to twenty-four percent doesn't seem outrageous in the long run and as we are adding a lot of multifamily areas to town, it might behoove us to look at that as a way to bring in revenue for new park additions because we are bringing a lot of families in and.
Well, I mean, the plus for us is that a lot of our multifamily that we've been able to build over the last five years has been areas, and one of the reasons we did it where we did it was because it's well served by parks.
Yeah.
So one of the reasons, you know, council chose to move forward with the Vale subdivision was because it, we had a park that was not being fully utilized, Lyons Park. So those easy, low hanging kind of gimme flutes are kind of gone. Going forward, then you're going to say, okay, well now we do need to build a new park, we need to have this number right so that we can, you know, fine tune it, because you aren't going to have that central, you know, veterans park where we can kind of build around that and channel people in. You're not going to have the Lyons Park where you can kind of build around it and channel it. You're going to be building these ones off in different directions where they need the full amenities and they're not.
Or we're running out of parks around all the circles.
That's right, exactly.
And you're saying that the new projected four sixty per single, and right now we're roughly four hundred, give or take?
Roughly, yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're twelve hundred dollars.
For, yeah.
Per acre, and if the typical single family development is about three units per acre, maybe a little bit less than that, it equates to about four hundred dollars per unit.
I, I'd almost like to see that go up a little, because if we're actually going to increase it on multifamily, we should, your single family, it wouldn't hurt to increase a little bit. And I think that's going to be a beneficial, I mean.
In terms of conversation about, you know, coming back to you with a recommendation, I think what I'm hearing is let's talk to the builders and developers and let's see what pushback we get. And so I think we just need to have a few conversations and say, we're looking at going up, what's the comfort level? Five hundred and four hundred or whatever? We need to talk about those, those comfort. The nexus is there because we could go up a lot more. And so we've, we've checked that box, now it's just a question of what's, what's the threshold point where, where we don't become a, a barrier deterrent to development?
So Stewartville's at five, St. Charles is six fifty, Byron's at nine fifty, but being in a comfortable range around there, but also talking to our, our builders that are in our area that work with us.
Well.
It'll all be important.
And the other thing is that we're going to talk to them, they're going to, the question they're going to ask is how soon are you going to put a park in? You know, if we're going to give you more, are we going to get more amenities in a park sooner to help our building?
Yeah.
Because if they can, you know, if we can work that out better, they're, I would think, be more willing to pay more if we could say.
If we could deliver that instead of them having to do it themselves, that's something that's beneficial to them too. Yeah, absolutely. Well, like I said, that's kind of how we would integrate some of the current subdivisions into those, so.
Well, I appreciate that, Brad, thank you very much. All right, so you're good there. Next is housing and grant study?
That's right, and actually, we'll lead off with that too. So as council, and Brian, I'm not sure if we've talked about it since you were elected, but go back to that slide, would you? Ian, the one you were just on there, kind of shows it well there. Uh, we are looking at applying for a grant. This is that western, western leg of the cemetery land that's currently undevelopable because of the sewer and water constraints as well as the French road that goes along in front of the cemetery in front of, um, Winter Court. So it's a project that we've identified for this grant that the state came out with as a housing infrastructure grant opportunity. Thankfully, the city engineers got some good numbers. We talked with Brad about, his firm has helped us to formulate a, um, an application, so we're looking to apply for this. So basically what we're looking at is water sewer connections and then rebuilding that street kind of around that corner there will allow for access and development in this part of the property. I think it's about twenty-three acres, twenty-two, twenty-three acres, that, I don't know if you want to talk about a little bit too.
Yeah, so, so this is, Minnesota Housing Finance Agency has this infrastructure grant. Um, it's a competitive grant, there's no guarantees we're going to get this, I know that it's very competitive, but it, they've got about seven point seven five million that they're distributing, and so we're taking a shot at getting some of that seven point seven five million. And, uh, I mean, this is city owned land, I think your objective is to make it not city owned land and put it into productive tax being used. Housing is the big demand down here and it's a logical place for housing. And so we've got these two colors on the map, two different projects. One is the expansion of the Mobile Home Park and the other one is that, that orange purple area to the west. You've heard from developers that they're interested in it, but until you are able to figure out how to get infrastructure over there, there's really not much interest in it. And so this is, how do you cover that gap? And that's exactly what this grant program through Minnesota Housing Finance is for, is extending infrastructure to areas that are difficult to, to grow, but logical to grow. And so the, the street corridor that this, the blue hatch there is intended to do is a, is a tired street, needs improvement, so great opportunity to, to try to put that infrastructure in along with that street improvement, realize some efficiencies and open up development to, to grow. So Brandon has been doing the, the engineering work on this and this will help then the city achieve its goal of selling that land for development purposes. What we need from council on this is a resolution to support pursuit of the grant, and I think that, is that resolution in the packet?
It sure is, yeah.
It is, okay, so you've seen the resolution, I can, happy to go through that with you if you have questions, but the resolution is needed in order to complete our grant supplemental. Questions on that? I think you guys have been pretty successful at securing grant dollars and hopefully we can be successful with, with this one as well.
Any questions there?
Yeah, so this is, it's a, it's a match program.
It is a match program.
So if we receive the maximum half a million, we got to put up a half a million, how will we be planning to recoup that if, if we get to that point?
Well, the land itself is, is, is something that can be used, the land value can be used for match, so that would cover the vast majority of it.
Okay.
Um, additionally, you know, we, we do have some funds that'll be coming in for the sale of that eastern half of the property, which we would utilize as part of the match.
Okay. Would we have some amount assessed to the existing park there since the road will be resurfaced or?
Um, I'm not anticipating doing that, that's something the council could discuss if they decided that they wanted to do that. But that's certainly something we could look at doing, I know I've discussed different possibilities a little bit with Brandon about doing a, an assessment to the property itself and doing a deferred assessment basically until it would develop so that in essence the, the developer would, would assume those costs when they purchase the property. That would allow us to utilize our, our, our four twenty-nine bonding, which would give us a lower cost of borrowing if we were to utilize funds that way, but at this point, I hadn't contemplated assessing the, the Mobile Home Park, but it's certainly something that could, we could discuss, because it would serve them, it would be a benefit to them. I think that's, is certainly something we could justify. I don't know.
Yeah, I think that road's in pretty poor shape too, so that would be the basis of the special benefit if we went down that road.
It would be a lower assessment than typical because it wouldn't necessarily, we wouldn't be assessing it, I mean, we'd be assessing mostly the road. It wouldn't be so much on the, you know, for example, the, the infrastructure kind of part of it.
Probably around in there, we're going to spend a lot of administrative time to get the assessments going and we got, I mean, not on one side, we're not going to assess, we got ourselves the cemetery and the rest of the road, so it's a small portion of a small portion that we actually assess, so it might not add up to much, I don't know if it's going to really move the needle with respect to getting potentially a half a million dollars to help do the project. Uh, I did note that that road is in pretty rough shape, so you kind of have a financial liability anyway to do that road at some point because it has been on our replacement list and I don't want to, uh, put new pavement out there if we're going to ultimately run this sewer and water to serve essentially the west half of that lot. I did pull up original concept plan, we started in two, twenty twenty, so we've been at this for five years to kind of get our arms around this and figure out how do we get that land out of, out of public hands and get it in private development, so here we are.
This, this doesn't fall into we, I don't, Senate Council, I don't know, we've talked about how we don't want to develop, it's already got the road, we don't want to develop for developers, it's just falling, is that starting to fall into that?
Well, I think, you know, I think, I guess I look at it, there's the, the component of improving the road, which we would have to do anyways, existing road, um, it's, it's a little bit similar to the Vale subdivision, where, you know, we, we took a small amount of money, we were able to purchase that relatively cost effectively extended road and now it's built. Um, you know, obviously, that's why I said, I think the deferred assessment could be something we could utilize, because then the cost, it's, you know, we're deferring until it builds, but then the builder who purchased the property is going to assume that assessment and then they're paying for it, because the goal is to have it paid for with the development. And then at that time, if that's the case, then the nice part about that is that if there were some tax incentive that someone requested, you know, we've, we've done enough of that, I think, for, for the time being, but if somebody did, they'd be able to, a future council could still do that without endangering the project, because it'd be two different pots. You'd say, okay, well, you got to pay this, when you bought the land, you had to pay your, or, you know, start paying on your deferred assessment. However, at the same time, if there was a need for some kind of tax incentive, it'd be possible to do it still without tying the hands of a future council.
I think one of the key differences here is that you have city owned land there that would, you want to sell.
Yeah.
And unless you make those improvements and get utilities over there, the market's not going to do it, you're just going to have farmland and, you know, that, I guess is a choice too, but getting it into tax generating use, I think is a reason to do it, not just extending infrastructure for development purposes.
Understand, thank you. Would it behoove us to get our park plan done before we get the grant for this so that we know that if it's going to be multi-housing in the purple?
Yeah, and well, I mean, you know, we don't know what that's going to be. We've had, you know, potential developers ask us about it, given us a draft of a plan and it had a combination of, of, you know, some multifamily and some multifamily. So, yeah, I mean, I know that the one niche that we, we think, Ian and I both think that we may still be missing is that senior niche a little bit and what that product looks like, we don't know, but this, this could be an ideal area for, for senior housing as well too. It's very accessible to fourteen, you know, fifteen minutes from downtown Mayo, you know, downtown Rochester, I mean, um, so we try to serve all the members of the public, you know, if we can, all the different age brackets, so. But yeah, Ian's Park, we have to get that all planned out on the South Side too, for sure.
So you'll be looking for approval of our support?
There's a resolution in there, uh, we would be looking for a, a motion on that.
Yeah, be the motion for the resolution approving Casson Crossing's infrastructure improvements grant submission.
I will make that motion to approve.
Ryan, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down, Brad.
All right, old business. Next we have email from Chief Fitch regarding clothing expenditures for the fire department. A little while ago, meeting a few ago, I had asked for a SOP, SOG they like to call it, for their response gear dress code. We've kind of looked and we can't seem to find any clarification stating that the council ever approved what they have sent us. So we're still kind of trying to figure that out. And last night at the fire relief meeting, I was there and in this email, the fire chief saying that Class A uniforms are bought in by the Relief Association, but he's saying
that Class A uniforms are boughten by the Relief Association, but he's saying that they belong to the city. At the fire relief meeting last night, the fire relief says anything purchased by them is owned by them. So there's some clarity that we still don't quite have. 'Cause the city never purchased any Class A uniforms for the fire department.
Yep, he mentioned that in one of his, in the email.
Just to be clear for me, Class A uniform is...
It's addressed to...
It's addressed uniforms for like...
For the parties?
For the parties, yeah, and for funerals, so it's not...
Major events, I would say.
The Relief Association...
It's not for work.
No, the Relief Association talked about Class Bs a little bit, but, which would be a lesser grade, a lot less expense, but nothing came of that either. But as you can see on here, it says, nothing provided by the Relief Association is official cast and fire clothing or gear. And it says has no effect on the city cast and budget. So, so we were just trying to determine if that has, if it's not cast and gear, then who does it belong to? He's saying it does belong to the city, but the relief's saying it belongs to them. So. I'd just like some clarity on that.
And I think, Lynda, Lynda, you've been working with Lindsay Derby to try and get this SOP policy itself. We'd actually like to see the whole one, you know, it's, if it hasn't really been approved, I mean, I think 2012 was when it was promulgated, so we'd like to be able to bring that back to take a look at it too, and, and, you know, have the city attorney take a look at it, I think, as well. So it's, it's probably time after 13 years to have a little update, so.
Does the Relief Association have a concern with the city not covering the, their official, those uniforms, those Class A ones, just based on the, the wording of that paragraph, I was just...
Well, I think the chief may, I think that's a longstanding argument that the council dealt with back in 2017.
Yep.
Um, so I, I don't know if we wanna reopen that this time. But at that time, the council had said that they, they felt like the city would cover the, the working uniforms, but not necessarily the dress uniform. And I know that my predecessor was, um, had stood pretty firm on that in her eyes that was inappropriate for the city to be paying for that.
Does their Relief Association, up to 156,000 reserves, 'cause that could be used to cover some of those costs?
Yeah, I think, I wasn't at the meeting last night, but I know...
Was it 40...
The general fund?
General fund.
39,723.
That's just their pension, okay, that's different, okay.
Yeah, the pension overage was the 156 you're referencing, yep.
So they have 40 left?
9,300, they're overfunded on their pension right now. Their pension came back.
They were audited this year too, so we do expect to get that audited in June. So we'll have copies of that for the council review as well. So anyway, we'll keep working to clarify things with Chief Fitch and with the, uh, the fire relief just to make sure everyone's on the same page.
So are these uniforms and this gear, are they all like personnel-specific? Like, they buy this whole set for a person, and then if they leave the fire department, that equipment's gone?
That's the struggle that they're running into, is that, you know, as you know, there's been some turnover, where people have only been there for three or six months, and so they're kinda debating like, when and what should they be buying for these new firefighters? And, you know, what level they should be bringing at before they, um, you know, they expend that money. I think in a couple situations where they may have bought somebody a Class A uniform, which really doesn't work for anyone else. I mean, there isn't exchangeable, it's not a T-shirt or something like that. It's, it's, you know, fitted for you, it isn't gonna work for some... That's where they're kind of at this debate point right now, is just determining exactly what they should, because otherwise, you know, those are, you know, I don't know how much those Class As cost, but they're quite...
$800, approximately.
They're quite expensive, so, for each one of them, so.
It's understandable they're concerned about that cost, that's a lot.
Absolutely, no, I mean, I, I think that's what we're kinda trying to lay out and help them with is, what are the good guidelines for, hey, after six months after completion of firefighter two, after, at what point do you kind of trigger that to go from probationary to a, you're gonna be here hopefully for five to 10 years or something like that?
And the ultimate goal is to make sure that everybody that's on the fire department is protected.
Yep.
That's the ultimate goal, we wanna make sure. So we wanna, we want, we wanna make sure the council sees the list and approves the list, you know, with their recommendation of what they need, 'cause they obviously know what they need more than we do. But we wanna make sure that we all see it, and, and that it's documented, and...
Yeah, they know what they need best, yeah, I agree with that.
'Cause that's one, you definitely don't wanna shortchange safety.
All right?
We don't need any action on that or anything?
No, I don't think so this time, like I said, I think we'll try and get, get that SOP out of them and bring it back to council at, at some, one of the meetings this summer, I think.
Thank you. It's no new business, excuse me, administrator's report, financial report.
Sure, so some good news there, um, we did get, uh, grant funding. We applied for a grant, and we're granted from the, uh, the LPP selection committee, the, uh, some funding for urbanization of Highway 57 from 11th to 16th. I know that, uh, Brandon referenced that at the last meeting, just some more details there for you. Um, so I think, and Brandon, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe we're looking at 27, 28 construction cycle, maybe 28, maybe, I don't know how that slates into our cycle, but, uh, funding-wise, but something along those lines. So that's exciting, that'll give us opportunity to have that so that it's ready for, uh, development to the west there. Given, update from Compass, um, they're, they're doing some, uh, changes to their name. There are some filings that were going in the CMMPA name, now they're gonna be all just going through that CM PAS name, um, as well as the power contracts, we have power contracts expiring over the next five years. Um, we're gonna be assuming a couple of power contracts from our partner cities, um, at least tentatively. You know, we have the addition of that, um, territory on the south side, so we'll be adding 300 customers. So in order to work with a couple of our cities, a couple of our cities are long. For example, the city of Wyndham is long on their power contracts. They had a meatpacking plant that is not operating at full capacity now. So they have more power, they purchased as a contract. Um, so we'll be assuming some of their contracts to help with our power costs on the south side as we grow. We're seeing more growth from there. Um, so just to let you know, we have, we have three different contracts. One is the WIPI contract, so currently we have WIPI, it's our nuclear, um, Point Beach, Wisconsin, contract. We're gonna be assuming a little bit more of that, which, the nice thing about that is it does meet the carbon-free standard for the state of Minnesota, which is a requirement. Um, the other two contracts are, one is from the city of Fairfax we're looking at, and the other one is also from Wyndham, um, they're both the Nebraska City Plant contracts. The best part about those contracts is that they come with capacity. So right now, we have two megawatts of WIPI, as you're aware, that has, you know, two megawatts of capacity. We're gonna be adding about two and a half more megawatts of, of power, but also we get that capacity, so. Um, so I'm excited about that, because that'll help us save a little bit of money on our, our capacity costs. As I highlighted at the last meeting, you know, capacity auction came in very high this year, and with the change in the, the way the curb slope demand works for power, it's, um, unfortunately, the renewables coming in are, it's just gonna drive that cost up with capacity. So, anyway, let's see, uh, the budget, hey, I put this update in my, in the packet last week, and I didn't know if it would change before today, nothing has changed. They're meeting in quiet, very quiet sessions up in St. Paul, and at coffee shops, and all over the place. There's legislators up there, they're not telling anybody what they're talking about. Um, there are seven of the, I think, yeah, seven of the 20 bills were approved, mostly the smaller ones. Veteran Services, some of the smaller funding bills, uh, several of them, the governor's already signed, but there's, you know, 12, 13 bills that are wildly, they're wildly apart. But the biggest one is the tax bill, which, the tax bill obviously makes up the budget, which is what they have to finish, so that's one where the senate has one completely different position than the house does. So how they're gonna come together on that, I, I don't know. Um, but, so, the update I have in there is still accurate, because there hasn't been anything else that they've brought to the, to the table yet. And then we talked about park dedication and length already, and as well as that infrastructure grant program. Um, so, just wanna highlight, I'll be on vacation next week, and then at that conference, the 8th, the 11th. Um, the finance report is also included in your packet. Uh, we've also reviewed, uh, reviewed today the, the finances for the first third of the year, we're through the first four months. Um, Sarah's doing a great job, she's staying on top of the reconciliation, so she's reconciled all the way through April. So I appreciate that's, that's better than what we were doing last year, so good job. And I think you're $3 off, so, you know, that, that's just one little, you know, just, just pass it over, you're fine. But, uh, the numbers right now for our budget are on track with projections. So payroll's on track, healthcare, they're on track, so the numbers look pretty good year-to-date. Uh, we have had some increased expenses at the aquatic center. Uh, they were open last, uh, Monday, on Monday, and it was 71, 72, and I wasn't sure if they were gonna open, but they wanted to open because they wanted to try everything out. And so that is, uh, an area where we're gonna be looking at when that bond expires. I know Kelly mentioned that's the next one that rolls off. We're probably gonna be looking at doing a new issuance to do some infrastructure inside of the pool. The mechanicals, um, you know, they're 13 years old now, you know, in two years, they're gonna need a, a refresh. Um, and it'll be good, because it'll be energy efficiency and stuff like that too. The heat pumps work great, so the heat that was broken last year, that machine, you know, those machines work tremendous, 'cause they've been, both been rebuilt. Some of the other items aren't working perfectly yet, but they are affecting the operations of the pool. They're just not quite as efficient as we'd like them to be. So they'll continue to work on that, and we're opening for the, the pool will be the 6th of June, so that's that, the day the school gets out, I think on the, the last Friday of, of the first, yeah, the first Friday of, of June, so we're excited for that. Full set of lifeguards, fully supplied, you know, we're looking forward to, it's, it's gonna be 71, 72 degrees that day, so we'll, usually the first two weeks of June are hit or miss. Like, this weekend's gonna be 85, next week it's gonna be 70, so, but the kids are gonna enjoy it anyways. I know my kids enjoy that, so we're excited about that. Otherwise, um, you could see that the trees out here were, were, were cut. They're moving forward with that water tower, pumper station project, so that's probably the first step for them is to eliminate those. Um, a lot of the other work in town here, the park modular is proceeding very slowly with the weather, and then having most of the staff work at the pool the last two weeks here has kinda slowed them there. But they're still hoping, but by July 4th, they'll have that one completed so that the kids can enjoy it over that long weekend, so. I think that's all I've got, if there's any questions, anybody has, I'd be glad to answer those.
RAB for roundabout, I think.
I'm sorry?
The RAB on that, the project, does that mean roundabout?
Yes, to the roundabout.
Yeah, that's the roundabout, that's right, yeah, for the, for the 57 exception, yeah, that's right.
Just confirming that, okay.
Yeah, the funding from that grant is meant to be for the center turn lane and the, the turn lane onto, was it 13th or something that's gonna be there?
It'd be the urbanization, so yeah, center turn lane, curb, gutter, and then, uh, then that entrance apron into 13th Street, that's right.
And that's 100, would be 100% funded by this?
Almost.
Or really close?
Design engineering's not eligible, so it might be 12% is not. But 100% of the construction, and then also, I'm sorry, the, the actual construction cost, plus construction administration observation RN2 that is covered, but just not the design portion of it.
Okay. And then, Tim, you talked about the electric contracts, is that gonna help reduce or maintain a lower variable fee that's on our electric bills?
Well, you know, the, the ones we're assuming, or...
Yeah.
In the short term, it will, yes, because we'll have that, we have a fixed price, and those are, they're not, you know, they're not, they're nuclear and they're, it's a coal plant, so it's a, that'll be a fixed price for the next five years as those new contracts, I mean, those'll come off at the same time period as original, 'cause they're the same length.
Mm-hmm.
2032, basically, we'll have all new contracts by then, so, and I don't know. Those are gonna be almost all renewable, the new ones will be able to, that's all that's gonna be available really, is wind and, and solar. So those will be much more volatile than the coal and the nuclear that we, that we have. It's possible we would still be able to have some nuclear, you know, it depends on what they decide to do with that plant in Wisconsin. The, the way things are trending, um, you know, if the data center need is there, that firm power is there, it's a good chance they'll, they'll redo that one, they'll have to refresh it. Um, if that isn't there, then, you know, a lot of the nuclear plants throughout the United States have been closed. It's possible that, that plant will close. Um, so the Nebraska City too, likely though, in the next five years, it'll maintain its coal, depending what power does. They've talked about making that into a, a gas peaker plant, which would, would be ideal too, which is really kind of how I see it going long-term if the state sticks with this mandate. You're still gonna have to have those gas plants for the, the peaks, because you're still gonna have something at night, and when the wind's not blowing and the sun's not shining, you gotta have something to provide that baseline for empowering. So I could see that one going to a, a, you know, a gasification process as opposed to staying as coal. So, anyway, long answer to a short question, but...
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, engineers report, there's nothing. Personnel, we have probationary firefighters. As you can see in the letter, they want to hire two more, let's see, where are they? Why am I not seeing the name? Oh, I saw him in there.
It's up at the subject.
Corey Potash and Scott St. Thomas. They would like to hire those by June 2nd, so we'd...
I did wanna highlight, um, we did have that, uh, Mr. St. Thomas...